Good evening, folks. We'll call the learning session February 11th. For Sarah, would you please call the board?
Oh, okay. Sorry. Aldrich?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
McKeon?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Tomzick?
Here.
Tucker?
Here.
And Barmen?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We will proceed to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we proceed with the agenda, we're going to do good news, but I wanted to take just a minute. We all, I think we all, or many of us that knew this individual, got some sad news that Steve Snyder, a board member, and Kathy knows him very well, passed away last week. And I wanted to take just a minute to recognize Steve, and I think he certainly deserves that. If I'm not mistaken, Steve served on the board for 15 years, according to what Sarah had provided, which is one of the longer tenures. Actually, Kathy Bush in the audience was on there for 20 or more, and Mary Ramensky was on there for 20 as well. But Steve served for a number of years, put in a lot of service. I think he held every single office during his tenure on the board. I had the good fortune to serve with Steve parts of both of my first two terms, and just want to recognize him and his contribution as a strong proponent for education in Shakopee, his service to the community, and his whole family. His wife was a fax teacher. His daughter is a fax teacher. So I think it's appropriate that we recognize Steve and think of the family at this time as well, but certainly recognize his service. So I just appreciate that, and Steve and the family, and sure, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mitch.
Okay. We will proceed with item number three, which is good news. I'm actually let you take 3.1, school board recognition. It seems a little... I mean, I shouldn't do it.
Well, next week, I'm sure we all know this already, but I'll share it anyhow. Next week is School Board Recognition Week, so February 18th and the 22nd. So just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to the members of our school board, let you know that I appreciate, and many others appreciate, the great work that you do. And then we do have a certificate of appreciation for your service, and so just want to say thank you, and we will be celebrating you. It's February 11th. We don't meet next week, but we will be celebrating you all next week and thinking of you and appreciating your service. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And like, we have, we have some principals here, too. What do you think?
That is correct. We have an even more special appreciation than what I just did. Our principals, as soon as I get the certificates passed out, they've been kind enough. They took the initiative, and I'll let them explain what they've got up their sleeves.
Derek Christie.
Tom Baron Gifts. Yes, my name is Derek Falton, Principal at Sweeney Elementary School.
Kristy Boer, Principal of Central Family Center and Equity Programming, Principal of the District. And we are here on behalf of the elementary principals and myself to share a book with you that meant something to our elementary schools, and I'll let Derek explain that a little bit.
Yeah, so every year, we celebrate Friendship Week. It's usually in October. We look at kind of the anti-bullying month, and this year, the book we chose was Exclamation Point. Okay? It's a book about standing out yet fitting in. And it was our theme throughout all of our elementarys. So in a way, for us to say thank you from the elementary principals especially, but all of our staff here at Shakopee, we want to thank you for your service because it's a lot of work, and sometimes there's a lot of turmoil, but we appreciate you guys doing whatever you need to do to make sure our jobs and our kids are in good hands. So we appreciate it. We actually address these books to each of you, so we're going to hand these out now, just as a token of our appreciation. So, I know, right?
We did not sign that, but we have your name.
Okay, so your one is yours.
Thank you.
So they'll sell while I'm keeping it.
Very cool.
I'll start this.
Well, here you go.
This looks great. I love this. Thank you so much. And...
I'm going to identify any other dreams.
So, yeah, it's very quick.
So if you go around to the elementarys, if you're able to make it out into the buildings, you'll, a lot of the buildings, you'll see the exclamation points up on the walls. What we did was, all the kids had an exclamation point that they had to decorate with acts of kindness, kind words, things that they took away from our conversations during that week. So hopefully, I'll be able to get a chance to see those.
So thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And please thank all the principals, anybody who just made it through. All right, we move to item 3.2, something near and dear to my heart, Shakopee Educational Endowment Foundation. Steve, I think we've got three representatives tonight, Kathy, Steph, and Alex.
Thank you for allowing us to take a few minutes of your board meeting tonight to talk about something that is dear to our hearts, and I know a couple of the board members here have been members. Reggie was a member for a number of years of the CEEP board, and Kristy currently is. So we're very, very appreciative of your past efforts, too. I'm Kathy Bush. And Stephanie Bodie. And Alex Lemon. We have, we are three of the 12 members currently of the CEEP board. CEEP stands for Shakopee Educational Endowment Foundation, an organization that certainly works closely with the staff of the Shakopee School District. However, we are a separate entity. We're a private 501(c)(3) organization, and some people back in about 1990 had a vision to try to support and provide some extra funds to the Shakopee School District. And so since 1992, there have been grants funded for additional projects that teachers have created and written proposals for. Since 1992, there have been 455 proposals funded for a total of over $369,000. So we are very appreciative to the members of the community and the staff of the school district who have provided the funds to allow that to happen these past years. For 2018-19, we changed up our funding process a little bit. We used to collect grants in the fall. We decided maybe it would be better to try that in the spring, to at least put the idea out there so that teachers would have some time to think about that when they were trying to get the school year started. This year, we received 48 proposals, which was twice the number that we received from the previous year. We like that. The more proposals, the better. And I think as our student population has grown so drastically, that we should be, you know, getting more proposals, and we also should be funding more proposals. So that's one of our goals, is to try to fund more. But this year, of the 48 submitted, we did fund 33 proposals. The process for that is the teacher writes a written proposal. The board members, the 12 board members, review those carefully. They're all ranked. And then we have a two-step process. We go through them after carefully reading them one time. People provide comments. Sometimes that causes us to think a little bit differently about a proposal, and then we go back for a second round of looking at those proposals. We don't have a particular number that we, you know, that we're going to fund or an exact dollar amount. We want to, wouldn't you say, we want to fund those proposals that are truly innovative, that will provide something different for the students of Shakopee schools, that actually, you know, just are an extra to all the fine work that you're doing with the things that you're funding already. So one thing that's new this year is that the board members of CEEP are going to be doing site visits, and that's in process right now, which one of our newer board members, who was retired, decided to do that last year, and he was so excited. And, you know, as a former board member, I think anytime you can get community members into the schools too, that just helps to spread the word about the good things that are happening in the school district. So we are all in the process of doing that, and we're hoping, too, that another thing that we'll accomplish is to maybe have other people in the schools come forward with proposals. We do encourage planned gifts and annual pledges, and there are people who are doing that. And we really are working to try to grow that fund so that we can continue to bring more projects to the classrooms. We also want to be sure that we fund all grade levels, so we have funded from early childhood at Central Family Center through the high school and the alternative high school. So all grade levels are being funded. Some of the proposals are district-wide, and some are school-specific. This year, we were able to boost our efforts a little bit due to the generosity of Gary Anger's family with designating financial gifts in memory of him to the CEEP Foundation. So I think that all of you have received the red booklet, and we can thank Kristy for that. She actually put that together. We have never, as a organization, had something like that, and so we're very appreciative of that. And we have some extra, if you'd like that. Would anybody have questions about anything with this year's grant proposals or anything? I know some of you are very familiar with this. For some of you, this might be new information.
Well, I don't have a question, but as someone who, when I worked for the school this week, received these grants, I know how really valuable they are. And as I read through here, and just the creativity I've seen here, integrated, you know, bringing math together with something seemingly unrelated but not unrelated, and they work it out, and the diversity, bravo. Nice work.
And that's, I think, what the board members are looking for from CEEP is creativity.
How balanced do you try to, for the, how balanced between the schools and the grades you try to visit? Because obviously, if somebody doesn't propose anything, it'd be hard to, just out of curiosity.
You know, we've worked really hard in the last couple of years to make sure that all levels are aware of the process and to try and encourage all buildings to submit proposals. I don't think we consciously go in saying, you know, we're going to dedicate this much to elementary level, this much to high school. Really, it's based on innovation and the merits of the program. Some of the things we look for are how many students the project reaches. So a lot of the grants cover more than one elementary school, and that, we love to see that because it's shared resources that way. You know, we're looking for the most bang for our buck. So it's not, we don't really have any laser focus on any one area or any one school. It's really just on the merits of the proposals, and a strong grant proposal, too, from the teachers, and how are we going to, what outcomes are we going to see. It's more outcome-oriented than it is focused on balancing. But historically, it has been, you know, reached every level most years.
And sometimes, you know, I'll just say that sometimes we don't get a lot of response from a particular school for that year. Don't know why, but doesn't mean that it, you only have one or two for a particular school that, oh, well, those are the only ones, so they will get the grant. That's not necessarily the case. You know, again, we look at the mission of what the organization's about and what our purpose is, and if the grant matches that. You know, the dollar amount, like this year, you know, $30,000-something, can seem like a very small amount compared to the school district's annual budget. But we think it represents a lot of innovation and a lot of opportunities for those students, so I think there's a lot of bang for the buck for this, due to the creativity of the classroom staff.
I'd like to applaud your efforts. It's just the impact you guys have is tremendous at the classroom level, at the student level, which is what I like. It's about as grassroots as you can get, because the teachers are the ones that are coming up with the idea and submitting it. And so I flipped through this book, which by the way, is phenomenal. I've never seen this done before. This is really, really good. And I love the fact that, you know, our first year officially in the academies, and I applaud Jody for submitting one, and this is a perfect example of the academies and the lens that we're trying to look through. It's a history, US history project or program for the engineering and manufacturing academy. Kind of like, wait a second, the whole idea is to look at history through that lens, which is great. So I just thought that would be one of the single out. It's a great job. Do you have any comments? Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if there were any other comments, then we'd like to kind of officially present you with a check for $30,118. There you go.
Sure.
All right, where do we go?
Ashley, you want to take a picture? Or would you like?
Just stay right here.
You're running around.
You need a big hand.
I love this.
You have to go into the bank.
Four people might need a deposit.
Oh.
She's been trying to get out of the window all day.
Thank you for allowing us to come tonight.
I was just going to say thank you so much. You know, and so it's...
I didn't realize that CEEP had been around for that long. Wow.
I was first on the school board in 92, and I remember Jack Turnbull and things coming to me some of that. They've always been great projects that the staff has controlled. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. We need to have a motion to accept the agenda presented, and is there any changes or anything that we're aware of, Sarah? Okay, so pretty much as presented, can I have that motion?
I have it.
Judy, Matt? Any discussion on the agenda before we get into it? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those pose, the motion passes. If we're going to follow the flow, we're just going to start right out with an Academies of Shakopee Board and D L mid-year report. We got Nancy and Jeff. You guys want to come on down?
Sure.
Go.
Good evening, buddy.
Come on, buddy. So Sarah?
Yep.
So as part of the January designation ceremony, the other benefit we had at that time was that Star Herman, our board next-generation learning coach, was also here at that time as well. And she did a two-year, or two-day, not two-year. Two days really felt like two years, but a two-day mid-year visit. And so if you look at the next slide, just especially for our newer board members, one of the benefits of being in the network is that we've had a coach, her name is Star Herman. Most of you have probably met Star or have heard her name. She has really been our primary facilitator through all five phases of the implementation process. And so when you look at those five phases, she started with us almost three years ago with that explore, invasion, and planning process. And now it's kind of exciting to know that we're into the implementation process. And the implementation phase is two years. It's the first two years of doing full implementation of the academy model. And she will come two times a year. So she'll do a mid-year check-in, which she just completed at the time of the designation ceremony. And then she'll be back this summer as part of the steering committee's retreat that they do to do another check, and that'll continue into the next academic year as well. And so she spent a lot of time with a lot of stakeholders over the course of those two days. She spent time with the steering committee, one of the industry councils. She met with Mike. She met with Dave. She met with a lot of district office folks, Jenny as well. And then on the second day, she spent the whole day at the high school, met with students, met with academy teams, team leads.
Leads, academy coach, principals.
So she really got a good two full days to sort of see where we're at. And so some of the things that she said in her report, we're going to kind of discuss tonight, and Jeff's going to start with what she said for some of our successes so far.
Yeah, so she had the report broken down, you know, areas of success, and then, which I'll cover on this slide, and then just areas, you know, the next level, where do we want to take it from here? So hitting some of the highlights and the successes, the master plan. I think back to two and a half years ago when I came. One of my very first days on the job was...
60 people in the boardroom here.
Yeah. And this wasn't that long ago, but really, you know, through, the master plan speaks to, with all the change that we've had, right, just in that two and a half years that we've had of planets in place, that obviously, it's a living, breathing document, but it's really been a good, solid foundation for all the work that we're doing around the academies. Our industry councils, I think, just, I think Star's always been impressed in Shakopee with just the level of community support that we get, just coming from every corner of the community. And so our industry councils are very strong. Obviously, our academy champions play right into that, you know, highlighting all of them, but some of the unique items that we have, having a city and county partnership is one of those, the Minutetown Sioux. I mean, I could mention all of them, but just the strong support that we've gotten from our academy champions. Our programs of studies, I know most of you have been able to see, just that if you look at each academy, right, the different pathways and just the work that's been done in teaching and learning combined with our partners, really, as the building, the structure of the building is being created. We have this curriculum that is having teacher input and community input as we're building that. It's definitely a highlight. Our professional development, we were in a unique situation as far as the time, thinking of me coming out north in July of 2016, and now we're just a full semester in. We've really had a lot of time to, very thoughtful in planning the time and effort going into the academy model. She highlighted our freshman academy. You know, this is our group of students that are going to have the full experience all four years. And so she was really impressed when she talks about purity, right, having all of those ninth graders being, picturing them all on the east side of the building, you know, in our two different, our two, our alpha and our omega team, having those communities, those common teachers. She feels we're just coming out of the gates really strong with our freshman academy. And in our identity, within our teams, you know, identity is those teachers coming together in those team meetings, and what is it to be a part of arts and communications or business and entrepreneurship? And really, you know, our outcome is we want kids to feel like that engagement, we're connected to something. And although, again, we're only a semester into it, Star and Jacob Glance, the academy coach, who we've had visited, has been really impressed with what the identity that we've created. And then probably for me personally, one of my biggest areas that I'm the most proud of is our academy teams, how we've taken a group of teachers who, for many of them, have, you think of education in the traditional sense, and now we've kind of, we've taken it and, you know, we're not departmentalized anymore. We're working in interdisciplinary teams. And to be able to visit all these meetings and watching the ownership and the excitement and collective group, you know, I've got combined 180 certified staff, a full and part-time teachers, just the buy-in and coming into those, into those team setting and really wanting it to be a good experience for kids, has definitely been a highlight for me. And then our academy coach, Elizabeth Dear, is our academy coach. I was just in a meeting with her. We were over at EnTrust data card today. She is really being that glue as far as taking those authentic learning opportunities that our partners are just, you know, knocking on the door, wanting to bring in, and she's really been that glue, working with our teachers and our leadership teams to, you know, as we know, it's going to be a process, but to make that come to life. So those were some of the successes, if you will, that we wanted to share with you.
So she had some recommendations, and we kind of rolled them up into kind of five bigger areas, but this would be the things that, as we continue to monitor our plan, adjust our plan, that we want to keep moving forward. One is the overall structure of the steering committee, which we talked about with the steering committee when Star was here. And so now that we're into implementation, the primary role of our steering committee is to monitor implementation of the master plan. And so there are some discussions we're going to be having with that group about how to do that. One of our first jobs this summer is the steering committee. It's their role to set up our summer retreat, which would be to look at data points about where we're headed, what's working, and then actually to make modifications to the master plan or set up the process to make modifications. And so there was quite a few suggestions about how to do that process. And then the second thing is our industry councils are transitioning, and we actually started working on this with Jeff's team at the last meeting with the industry councils. By and large, our industry councils have been amazing, and they've helped us, especially for, if you remember, I call them the grids or their instructional frameworks for each academy where you see the programs of study. Have had a huge influence on what courses we're offering, what sequence in terms of pathways or programs of study we're offering. But we're coming close to being done with that process in terms of the course development, and really, they need to pivot now to helping to sustain partnerships within each academy. And so Jeff's team, their academy principals, Elizabeth, are going to be transitioning to take over that role. In the past, it's been led by teaching and learning, those six industry councils. So that'll be fully transitioned to them next year, and Star had some good ideas about things that they should be working on.
And then the next one, transition to the block. We're spending a lot of professional development time right now in January. This Friday, we have a PD day, and it's, right, when you're going from a 45-minute, seven-period day and moving into a four-period, 85-minute block, you've got to look at how you teach, right, and how you implement that. And we are, you know, in January, we were doing work, you know, starting right, they're going to take your units and let's start breaking those up, but then it's taking it a step further, right? We know that in an 85-minute block, we can't do a sit-and-give, right? So how do we, how do we engage students in that instruction? And so we're doing a lot of work with that in March and April. On our early release days, we're going to have additional work around that. We'll actually be doing some practice with our students and getting them on the block and, those calendar works out good with our early release days, because you can get that in, you know, kind of a Wednesday, Thursday kind of a deal. So doing a lot of, a lot of work and talking about different types of instructional strategies, which I would argue, a lot of our teachers do it right now, but now it's just looking at, okay, we're kind of taking our time going like this, and how do we make that time more meaningful? So obviously, that's a big-ticket item. And then really related to that is the authentic learning piece, because that was really one of the driving factors behind going to the block, right? We want to have more time in a given class period where we can have those hands-on experiences that, you know, what you just covered, what Jody covered, and with the grant, right? How do we, how do we make those connections between what I'm learning in a history class and how it applies to a, to a given academy? And so we want to continue to develop that. We want to work in our teams to make those interdisciplinary connections, to kind of add that flavor or the flair of the academy, and that's just going to be something that's going to be part of our every-year learning as we get deeper into the, into the academy model, and it's learning how to engage our partners. And I think right now, for our teachers, I think a very reasonable place for us to be right now is, you know, we're still learning as teachers, opportunities that we have coming up. We're going to be having some externship opportunities that we did a little bit in October. We're going to be doing some more this summer to, you know, again, like I said, I was at EnTrust this morning. How do we get teachers to really see kind of that outside world? Because if I'm a teacher, I need to understand that before I can really implement that to a high degree of fidelity in the classroom.
And each of our industry councils at their last meeting committed to offering some type of short-term, like half-day to no more than two-day opportunities this summer for teachers to do like little mini externships, to get out and get into the businesses, kind of keep developing that relationship.
Right. And then the last one we have there is the continued development of those smaller learning communities. You know, we mentioned in the successes how well we're doing, having our ninth graders be a part of that freshman academy. Well, as we go into the block schedule and we're developing the master schedules, we want to, you know, again, one of the main purposes of why we did it as we're developing it, that we have, you know, students have teachers who they're building relationships with, not just over a nine-week or an 18-week period, but over the course of a high school career within that academy. So that is obviously something that's on the front of our radar, especially as we're going into a new schedule, to really make sure that we are, that we're measuring that, that we're keeping those, those small learning communities intact.
And finally, Sarah?
Yeah. And, you know, in the report, there was a, you know, it's a 14-page report, but, you know, you read it, and, you know, as the principal, you go through, you know, you kind of skip the successes and you go right to the areas, you know, right? It's like, okay, what do we need to do? And, you know, to, full disclosure, you know, you go through it and you read the areas, and it can feel overwhelming the first time you read it, right? But you realize that this is, this is a process, and we're going to be in implementation for a couple of years. But then you get to the conclusion, and, you know, that was a quote that Star said, "We're making tremendous strides for the collective transformation to wall-to-wall academy." So you read all that, and you read the conclusion, and it says, you know what? We're where we're supposed to be. You know, we are, you know, I think there was another quote we could put in there that, you know, as long as we are being forward and we're, you know, looking at the areas that, okay, being really mindful of those steps to the next level and where we can improve, you know, she said, there's no reason... improve, you know, she said, there's no reason why we can't be a beacon school in the Ford GL network. So lots that we've accomplished, a lot more we need to do, but it's, it's there, she's a great resource to have to be able to help us keep everything moving. So I think we're doing good.
Any questions?
Well, there's one that I'm especially interested in the common time that teachers within academy have to talk about. Students do have any sense of how that's going? It seems like that would be-
Yeah.
Something high school teachers always wanted to never have.
Yeah. First of all, they love it, right? They have, having that time built into the day. And so what we're doing right now is we meet, we meet twice a week. We do Tuesdays and Thursdays. So Tuesday, the Tuesday meeting, you know, that might be that time when we're talking about authentic instruction or some interdisciplinary opportunities or general academy of business, you know, business in general. And then Thursday are the meetings where we're having the intervention, those discussions about kids. And, and what in year one, what we're really building on is creating those systems, you know, thinking that, okay, if I'm in an academy and let's say I've got between 300 to 400 students in an academy, is creating those efficient systems. So yeah, we're meeting every Thursday, but we want to make sure that we are having as many discussions about as many kids as possible, right? And when we're having those discussions, what are the different, the different avenues, right? For, for intervention and how we'll be helping students? And I think that's, that's going to be continuous. And, you know, that's what we've learned from Nashville is that you don't come out of the gates in year one and you have it 100% figured out. But I think for me, that's, that's a tremendous high value, right? Because that really is, that's the essence of creating a small community within a large high school is that you're building those relationships with kids and you have people like, you know, we could be, we could be a team right here and we could be talking about, yep, you know, Timmy Johnson is someone who we have and we all know, right? Here's his strengths, his weaknesses. And, and I see that. I, I visit the different team meetings and it's, it's great to see those. I think what we all want is, we just want to be as efficient as possible being able to do that. But again, that teaming piece is, has been a highlight.
Great.
Because when you do that, then you can start, then it opens up the discussion of, okay, what do we do building-wide and system-wide and what can we implement that's going to benefit? It just opens up a whole new conversation and it creates more opportunities to help kids.
We trained all staff in teaming over the summer and then we've actually had, the primary trainer came back and sort of did some progress monitoring, which then Star followed up on in January as well, so.
And that was all through Ford as well?
Mm-hmm.
That training? Great.
With the quote up there, wall-to-wall part, are we still unique and then we have the full academy model under one roof or have other schools been?
So wall-to-wall just means every student is in an academy.
Okay.
Because there's lots of districts that have what are called pocket academies, which is it's a choice for some kids, not all kids. As far as we know, and I recently talked to Julie Christ about this too, the superintendent at Alexandria, we, we think the only two in the state of Minnesota that have wall-to-wall is Alexandria High School and Shakopee High School, so.
And how many academies are there right now? Two to three?
They only have, they have the freshman academy plus three. Yep, career academy is three, but they're half ours, less than half of our size.
They're not actually affiliated with Ford?
No.
They didn't watch each other?
They did show, yeah, you have, you, you would know this, Reg, you have to apply and be accepted into the network. And at the time, they chose not to apply because in the early part of the Ford network, they were looking for districts that are closer to the capitals of the states that they're in because they're in, I don't know, 23 states now or something like that. But they've kind of broadened that since. So Julie Christ and actually their high school principal Chad was here during the designation ceremony. So they're, they're having some more. We're talking with them again about how to continue our collaboration with them, which has been very helpful to us. And then I, they, they're, they've been having discussions with Ford too.
Now, how long have they been in the academy?
Longer than us. So they, they designed their building around the model just like we did. And I think this would be, I'm trying to think, because I saw the building, I'm looking at Sarah, it seems like it's five or six years.
14.
Five for sure, I think. Five or six years would be my guess.
Could be six.
I have a question for you to answer. You just said every kid is part of the academy models. How does a special ed kid pick an academy if they're not verbal? Do parents give that?
I have to look at him because they do their own district.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think with that, I think that would be part of the team. That would, you know, you definitely would want to get parent input because what you're going to do, like, like any student, you want to draw on interests, right? And so, so, you know, I would say whether you're verbal or nonverbal, right? There's, there's an advocate there and there's, and there's ways to find that out because that's really what we want is kids being in a place where they feel, hey, this is, this is cool, this is interesting.
So do all the special ed kids go through the teaming process as well? Because I know some special ed kids go to classes and some kids are just housed with one teacher. So if you're just with that one teacher, are you still part of the teaming process?
Oh, yeah, we have, because on our teams, we have, our teams are representative. So we're, we're set up where we have special ed teachers, we have, yes, we have mainstream and special ed teachers are a part of, are tied to each of the academies. Now, now you start getting into that, you know, the purity piece, right? Because if I'm a case manager, I, you know, you're going to go with what the students want to have. And so as, if I'm a spec teacher, I could be cross-sectioning. But what we, what we want to do in the bill is we want to create as much, as pure as possible, right? We want to create that team, that team answer. And it's, it's not exclusive to Gen Ed or just Med Ed, it's, it's all of our kids. Yeah.
That's one question. In regards to future, at what point would Shakopee consider thinking about adding an Because obviously, you know, we have a great cross-section of careers, but obviously there are some that are missing. Maybe it's more of the construction trade type of academy. Maybe that's not what it is, but to incorporate more of those classes.
So we have, construction is, is actually embedded in the engineering manufacturing academy. So there's a whole program of study around construction. I think what we've always assumed is that based, once we have a better sense of enrollment patterns, which are changing quite a bit with all the changes we're making, that it might be necessary to either collapse a program study or, like you said, pick a different program study within an academy to actually close one academy to make, you know, physically the way the build is, building is set up is unless we would add another tower, which is possible. We have kind of the seven locations set up for the physical presence of seven academies. So, you know, I would say that would be, I could see more changing in what is the programs of study within an academy versus maybe unless we would have an academy that just is not doing well at all, completely changing to a whole new, different academy, which could possibly happen. I mean, that's what we're going to find out over the next few years, right? Is what, what's, what they vote when they register, so we're going to see. But so far, I think even, because our freshmen did choose here recently, I think we found a pretty equal distribution again, right?
We did, yeah. I want, I'm just going to remember here, but, you know, health science, again, like this year was the most students, but I want to see our spread. I want to say health science might be a tick over 400 and then this model, we're talking into low 300s. So we're still, that's-
That's great.
Yeah. And, and, and again, you know, the way that we did that process is, you know, we want to capture the kids who are all in and then we'll ask a question of, you know, on six of one, half a dozen of the other. We try to question it in a way that we're really capturing what kids want.
Could we get, last year, we got a breakdown report that kids chosen by their basic demographics as well.
Oh, sure.
Fascinating. So if we can get that report. Speaking of registration, I had the pleasure of signing off on my daughter's registration. It was really exciting for me to see this all come to life and come to reality and, and it's 22 AP classes, which I was gritting my teeth on, but I'd rather have her reach and, and try. But it's just so fun to see it, putting the puzzle pieces together and all those things are, it's, it was more exciting for me than for her.
Well, you know, and as a parent, I have a middle school parent, you know, and I, I see, I just see the simple questioning where, you know, the gateway, you know, it's like every time we call into the gateway course, there's a new career that I want to do, right? And, but then she'll think of new things and she'll ask, well, Dad, if I want to do this, is it tied, you know, is it more in this academy or this academy? And it just shows that it just, our, our middle school students, they're thinking about, right? And that's, hey, if we're changing from one, that's okay, that means we're exploring, right? So, yeah.
Good question.
Were there many students who chose an academy and didn't get that one?
No, you know, what, what we did is, I should, there's an appeal process to, to everything. And so what we do on that questionnaire is, is we do, you know, I, I want to know if I'm a student, I'm 100% business and entrepreneurship and if I can't do it, you know, it's batter bust. The second question we designed it was, and I think some, you know, you get some students that kind of read it, well, it's my number two choice, but the, the one question is, you know, we wanted to capture if I'm 50% this and 50% that, you know, in other words, I would do either of these. Then what we did with that question, we used that to kind of help balance things out, right? But I know some students thought, well, it meant that was my number two. But whether you misunderstood, you know, that doesn't matter, just do an appeal and give a reason why and we take those, we take that back. And then, as you can see, we, we're not so worried about if they have to be 100%, you know, because we, we knew we were going to have windows and, you know, it's okay, health science is, is all right. We're still capturing a small community. But I, I would say at the end of the day, because now we're into the registration process is, I'd, I'd like to say we got kids where they want to be. Yeah.
That's my son's biggest concern. What am I going to do if I don't get into the academy?
We put a lot of time into that last year and how we want to word that survey and how we want to capture that, you know, because you don't, you don't want to, again, you know, you need to choose, but we wanted to try to get as many, an idea, okay, what are, what are you thinking? Just as you would, just like if you were an artist, now what are you thinking, right? And so we try, you know, when you're doing that with thousands of students, you know, you try to do that the best you can. Because we all know the whole idea behind this is that, you know, you want to get kids to where they're at, but we also know too, that we can't have, you know, 2,700 kids in one academy, right? So, yeah.
So one comment and two quick questions. The comment, you answered the question, I was going to ask, how's the choosing going for next year? And the comment is, that was my biggest concern last night, and we've been through this whole process. What happens if everybody just goes after this one? And our distribution was quite great last year and I was thrilled to just hear you say that the new kids picking, it's the same thing. That to me is a, that's two data points. That now starts to create a trend and I, I really liked it, so I applaud that. Two questions. Sarah, can you go back one slide? I think there's a pretty easy question. First one is, is there any kind of timing? Actually, let me ask a different question first. Am I correct in assuming these aren't so much deficiencies? This is truly how we continue to grow and develop and progress?
She calls it next level because that's some of the next steps or next things you need to be-
It's not that we get it wrong, it's just here's the evolutionary program.
Sure.
Is that safe?
Yeah.
So then the question is, the second question is timing. Is there a time for, I mean, transition to the block, that's kind of time-bound because we're going there, right? But do we have a window to do these things or are these like, hey, you need to get these done in the next six months to a year? Or I remember back, when we started this, several things were a few years long in accomplishing. Are any of these, you know, time-bound?
I know, I can speak at least to this first one. Star felt, and I think Mike probably felt it too, some sense of urgency to make sure that our summer retreat was as it was and intended to be. You know, in fairness to our steering committee, though, there was kind of a long planning process prior to implementation. And then, you know, we were dealing with a variety of, of factors around, you know, just this, you know, pushing to keep the support high for the academy model, those kinds of things. And so she just felt, feels really strongly that that one, we need to really work to make sure that they, that we're really living up to true partnership, which is that the, that the steering committee is helping us as an external piece to ensure that we're doing true fidelity to the implementation plan. And that that's one of the things that makes it truly sustainable is that the community is helping us on an ongoing basis and it's not like an advisory council or, you know. So I know she felt some strong urgency to that. I don't know if Mike wants to speak to that or not, but.
She did and she shared that and that was, and it was good. And I think we, you know, I'm a fresh set of eyes in a lot of ways and we went in and wanted to make sure that, yep, there, there was a sense of urgency and, you know, if you're in implementation stage, here are the, you know, here are the, the tasks for the steering committee and how they would suggest that they're structured and we've gone to work on that and feel we're, we're headed in the right direction and we'll certainly meet those time targets as well.
Well, it all sounds terrific. Thank you for the update and keep the work going.
Thanks, guys.
All right. We'll move on to FY '19 budget revisions and FY '20 budget assumptions. Talk money. Jeff, our money man.
Jeff, do you have a check?
What's that?
Are you going to project?
You have it?
I have it.
Can I grab it?
Yeah, you can have it.
That's probably quicker.
All right. All right. funds. There's two funds. We would propose making some budget revisions for this current year, so in the 18, 19 budget year. And then we're well into the way of planning for the 19, 20 budget and we're going to share the assumptions we have in place for, within the general fund. So if we look at the adapted budgets, so this is the budget, the governmental funds portion that the board approved back in June. So it's, it's our fiscal year, July 1 through June 30, 2019. See the projected revenue, expenses and then projected fund balance. So if you were looking at the budget book, the difference here is that in the beginning fund equity, I've inserted the audited fund balances versus when we approved the budget, it was a projection on, on where things will end up. So that's the only difference there. Then we get into the assumptions and I think we shared this with the board finance a week or so ago. Overall, the assumptions are, when you look at, you know, $100 million of revenue and expense, total, the adjustments are, are pretty minimal.
Let me delta.
But I think they're important to review because they are dealing with enrollment and, and then staff costs, which are, I guess I've got it here, I don't know if you threw it, but staff costs account for 82% of general fund expenditures. So we'll see that piece. So general fund revisions, so there's an enrollment adjustment, next page I'll kind of do a summary of, you know, what we're looking at, why we're making that adjustment. Basically, our enrollment is less than projected and most of that is at the, at the elementary level. Then we're doing an adjustment, positive adjustment on the revenue side for categorical aid, special education. I think we, we work with the model from Department of Education to try to project special education revenue. I think I always say that it will be probably April of this, April 19, when we know what we've really got for special education from the prior year. So not that we're chasing a number, I think we're pretty close here, but, but we're making that adjustment at this point. Then there's a revenue adjustment. It's one of our funding components, the pension revenue. That's a result of an increase to our teacher retirement contribution. That flows through on the staffing updates as well. So we're projecting the slight increase in, in the district share of teacher retirement. So 100,000 on revenue and then when we look at that staffing update, 117, that's also included in that number. Got a small state grant that we didn't know about when we brought the budget to the board, 75,000 revenue, 75,000 expense. And then the staffing update reflects pension adjustment. So once we go through and put in all of the new staff, all of the changes, we're kind of doing that by-line item, by the benefit category, we adjust the budget downward 170. of doing that by line item, by benefit category, we adjust the budget downward, 117,000. Then utilities expense, that's one, I think I told the board finance. When we finish the audit, we typically will go through, I'll go through kind of line item by line item, or we kind of missed the budget, and it's in our utilities expense, and I went back, it's not because we added square footage to the high school, because we, we've just, we've just missed on that number, I'm going back three, four years, so let's adjust it to where it needs to be. Again, use a formula, like a dollar per square foot for electricity, 40 some cents for gas, so this will get us to where the actual expense is going to be. We had a workers' comp renewal in November, and actual expenses for our workers' comp insurance for the year will decrease by 30,000. So, again, I think I talked to the board finance, do I really even need to, we're talking $35,000 decrease in revenue, $78,000 increase in expense, and 100 million dollar budget. But to me, what's important are those, especially those areas of enrollment and staff costs that we need to go on and adjust those, look at that regardless.
But in total, I'm sorry to interrupt, Jeff, but I want to make this point, tell me if I'm right or wrong, roughly 110,000 on 100 million dollar budget is 1/10th of 1%.
Right?
Right. I mean, that's just phenomenal to make, for that being the revisions in mid-year, kudos to you guys in terms of your planning.
Yeah, I don't feel too bad bringing it. If we got to 10%, that'd probably be someone else here.
1/10th of 1%, that's phenomenal.
So now next year has to come in 100, 100%.
1% to 10%.
Yeah, right.
What do you get for me? What do you get for me? A $5 plus for my son?
Sure, that'll happen. All right. Then, the other, the other fund in the governmental funds, capital project fund revisions, I think last year we had, the total, well, total dollar amount was about eight and a half million. We just didn't spend that due to time, it's not that. So this is the fund that's funding the high school expansion and a few other capital projects, so it's eventually going to work its way to zero. We just thought we would be spending 1.4 million dollars sooner, didn't happen, so obviously at June 30, the fund balance is a little bit higher than what it's going to happen this year, so we're adding that. And that's reflected here, then, what we call our revised budget. Audit again, same audited, better be the same audited balances at the beginning, and then I just, the items involved are that, where the revisions are flowing through. Let's look at the chart for the fund equity, and it's nice to be able to look at the FY19. If we look at the restricted fund, you can see where that was a couple of years ago, approaches 1.5 million dollars. And over to the on assigned, that should be, if I can go back here and take a look, I guess I've got total fund balance, but anyway, over 2.6 million dollars, so. So some improvement, and some good improvement in district equity. So, questions on revision? So what I'd like to do then is, we'll bring that to the board at the end of February, and actually have you act on it, so I can go in and put that into the finance system.
Jeff, just if you can go back up one slide above the graph, sorry, the next one, I'm sorry. On the debt service.
Yeah.
I just, I want to refresh my thinking, I think it's good for us to talk more frequently. That's basically a pass, right?
Yeah.
Before that, we pay down bond commitments. What would we say if somebody said, can you spend that down to, you know, 200,000, and would we save any money if we were to roll that fund balance into paying earlier, or is that not an option, or is it wise?
Probably, probably not an option, we have to follow our amortization schedule. But you're exactly right, debt funds has the tax levy that comes in to pay, to pay down our bonded debt. It'll usually have a fund balance, sometimes it'll approach 5%. And it's there, kind of, you levy, we are required to levy 5% more, and then if there's debt excess, the MDE actually looks at the fund balance, probably wouldn't let that go to 6 million, and they'll reduce our, and that's happened.
Yep.
To the district as well, so. You kind of build a fund balance, because there, in a year, there might be some delinquent taxes, abatements, and we need to be able to meet our debt obligations, so. Okay? Questions on?
Yeah, I have the revised budget, and assuming going off this graph, that we have those funds in the bank. We have those funds available to spend for the budget increase.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, I'm understanding your question, but.
Are you saying?
As far as, go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to understand, are you saying, are they real dollars?
Yeah.
They're not just on paper, they're real dollars, that if something catastrophic happened, we would have it to spend?
Correct.
Is that, and I assume the answer is yes?
Yeah, okay. You were talking about the fund balance.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I would say that's available, but it, but fund balance and cash in the bank can be two different things. At the end of the year, we might have a receivable from the state of Minnesota of 6 and a half million dollars. So we recognize that as revenue, and it projects out to that, and fund. So it's not always, it's not always cash in the bank, but it's, but it is a real legitimate equity of the, of the school district.
Okay. Jeff, it's safe to say, if we summed everything up and went out of business, that would be left over at the end.
Yeah, so it's, it's a kind of, it takes our receivable from MDE, federal receivable, and then we have payments, so we, and those are on the books. So, all of that combined assets liability is equal here.
And we're not planning to.
Thank you for.
But I was also going to say, during a school year, the revenues and expenditures do not come in, in any type of consistent order, and some of that fund balance is used when the revenue hasn't been realized from the state, and so it covers, you know, it gets you through the year. But if you were able to stop and total it all up, that would be, you know, in essence, in a bank account.
Yeah, so, yeah, as of June 30, when we stop and total it all up, that's what we're projecting for.
Jack, do you know how long it took to get to that point? At any point during the government shutdown, does that affect school districts?
No. No, I think there was some concern about some food service, federal food, but we never got to that point, so. At least first.
How long does it take to get to that point?
So, what's that?
How long does it take to get to that point?
I think they were talking about maybe March or April, we'll see. So, so we never, we didn't approach it.
Jeff, before you dig into the fiscal 20 budget, I know we talked about you, the revised budget had a change of 1/10th of 1%. I just want to tell you something about Jeff, which he'll probably be mad at me for sharing, he was frustrated by that a little bit, and went back and revisited everything, and, I mean, seriously, that, but, you know, which is great, that's exactly what we want, and, you know, I don't know if you'd ever be completely happy unless it was zero. So I appreciated that kind of, you know, really going after it, and that was great.
Yeah, thanks. But maybe for newborns, so if you think about it, going back to that staffing update, so you don't necessarily have to come back and update that, but we're bringing a budget to you in May, June, and it's based on staff who are here right now, and we moved them up on the salary schedule, and not all of those staff, some people retire, some people leave, so you've got now teacher A, that's, you know, we had this person VA 30, step four, but the new person is VA 15, step, so we, I go through that and adjust all those numbers, so.
But I appreciate.
So you're always going to have.
But I appreciate the meticulous nature with what you do to work and the high standards you hold yourself and your team to, so thank you.
We all appreciate that, seeing that.
It was like grass like that that are up into the right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Where we've been the last couple of years was some significant investments. It's nice to see very modest work.
Okay, all right, so, as I said, we're also starting to work on the budget for next year, that will, 19, 20, that will have you approve in June, kind of timeframe. So, right now, and I'll go through the assumptions that get us to these numbers, we're, general fund, we're projecting 99,670,000 in revenue, expenditures of 99,6, so we are projecting a surplus, pretty small surplus when you're talking 100 million dollars, but a surplus nonetheless.
You tend to take, as you have, a conservative approach.
Yeah, I would, I would say.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. What you kind of need, so what's, what's built in there on the revenue side, so there's a thing called basic general education aid, it's an amount that comes as paid per student. We're saying that that's going to go up 2% to 6,438. That provides 58 million of that 99 million, so it is a significant number in our budget.
When are we going to find out that dollar amount?
We will find out when the legislature finishes their work. So, there are times where you have to approve a budget by July 1.
Right.
So there's been a few times where we're in extended session and they board approve this budget, we think it's going to be 2%, but maybe we don't know.
By the government, we might not know.
So Mike, have you been hearing anything? There's lots of articles in the paper about changing the formulas and.
It's still very early, it's on the platform for a lot of organizations, you know, MAS A and AMSD, you know, and others like that are looking for 3 and 3 on the formula and inflation adjustment, but, you know, whether that would ever come to fruition or not, there's a lot that has to play out. So at this point, it's still pretty early, bills are being introduced now that actually contain that, word, exact wording, but a long way from passage by two houses or two bodies of the legislature, and then being signed by the government. I did want to point out, Joe's point is really well taken, and it's a challenge for Jeff's job, and our job is, earlier in a slide, you saw that 82% of the budget goes to staffing, we're contractually obligated to take care of staffing needs typically well before the legislature finalizes the budget for next year, which is a really, really tough challenge, so.
Yeah, and with the school funding, it's easier to focus on the 2 and 2, right, like it has been the last few cycles, well, last cycle was 2 and 2 with nothing on the categoricals. The other funding, so it was kind of hollow, 2 and 2, because the previous 2 and 2 had included significant funding for the special ed and the other category, so we all get fixed it on just the number, but it's, that's the baseline.
Well, and you hit another great point, when they say 2 and 2, you assume it's 2% across the board, well, it's 2% on the general fund, which is about 60% of the budget, so if it doesn't hit the categoricals or that other 40% of the budget, 2 and 2 is actually 1.2 and 1.2.
Yeah.
Which doesn't keep up with the, you know, rate of inflation cost, you know, kind of cost of that, so.
One thing that I've been watching myself is the bill that Senator Pratt, I think, is carrying for special ed reform, like maybe lowers some of the administrative costs with possibly additional funding, I believe, from what I've seen, but anyone else.
Yeah, there's some, the Pratt subsidy, yeah, you know, we're hearing that. So we, you know, we have been hearing the 3 and 3. I guess, why did we pick 2, kind of look at the, the history there, going back to 15, 16, it's been 2. But we'll monitor that, absolutely, if it changes.
You don't plan on 3 and 3, and then end up with 2.
If it's in law, by the time we approve the budget, we'll have made those, well, made those.
And I can't remember the last time it was above 2.
Yeah.
No, I can remember a few years where it didn't change.
Well, math was really easy.
Hey, I can figure out that one.
Some areas will wait six months to pay.
So, and I think, Mike, you're talking about some of the other components of the gen, and when I say formula driven, for the most part, I mean there, it's a dollar amount attached to our enrollment, so if we're good on our enrollment, these numbers, and if the legislative number changes as we assume, then we'll be close there. Property tax revenue, fairly easy, because you already approved that in December, so when you did that in December, that's for the, it's called property tax payable in 19 for the 19, 20 school year, so. We have that, plus or minus delinquent taxes, a few miscellaneous taxes, but for the most part, it'll be in that area.
And Jeff, sorry, just to interject there, if somebody builds a million dollar home, now that's not taxable until '20.
We're not going to see that.
That, that number's a fixed number.
Yeah, it's a fixed number.
Yeah.
Yep, you certified the levy at the 15, 3, and that's, that's the certified, so. Other state categorical, we're showing 13.6, biggest chunk there is, is special education, it's probably about, I think I've got 9.9 million built in to that number, so. Federal revenue sources, I'm just leaving it at current year, that's what we've got in the current year. And then, so that's kind of big picture revenue. And then personnel, staff personnel costs, 82% of our expenditures, but it's important is, I'm just hearing, is board approved positions from the current year are rolled forward to the 19, 20 fiscal year. So what we're saying is, we're not looking at, there's, people love to expand this program, a lot of good reasons to do a lot of those great things for kids and expand programs, but we're saying under our tight, our budget constraints, we're not looking at making any changes. So there are no staffing changes anticipated in the preliminary budget, except as may be required due to enrollment fluctuations, so.
Sorry, two questions. I'm assuming when you say roll forward, you're, like you outlined before, it's another staff cost or another.
Step in some, yeah, maybe some inflationary increase due to contract negotiation.
And then, as you talked about, enrollment fluctuation, a couple of those hotspots that it comes time to August, and we'll look at, like we've got a kindergarten class that's above, above our guidelines, do we have a contingency built in for that, or would that be additional spending, non-budgeted?
I would say that this year, we, we have, it's probably by default built in, because I'm just taking the current staff.
Okay.
And remember, one of the revisions we're making is an enrollment adjustment, so we've got fewer kids, but I'm rolling that staff forward, I'm making the changes, kind of anticipating what enrollment will be, so it's, we'll get closer and clean it up more as we go through the budgeting process, but right now, I would say there's, there's some contingency built in.
Thank you.
So these are the staff ratios, have you had a different name for this?
Target.
Target? No, I'm good target.
What does it say?
It says target. Well, I know, but then on the grid, it shows, it says target. And see the same thing for middle school and high school, and then, can you see those? So when you look at general fund, 82%, you know, then we've got instructional supplies, we've got some utilities, but non-staff expenditures are 22 million, representing 22.4% of the general fund. So it's all about where the staff costs can go and end up. And then I just break instructional supply allocations, we're leaving the per pupil unit allocation for instructional supplies at the same level that it's at currently. Transportation contracted services, I will tell you that we think, we know we can reduce about four routes, just based on load counts, without changing any service quality, that is built in here, so that's, building that in kind of helps us balance that budget. Tush and payments, I think we're estimating with a little bit of an inflator, and that pension supply budget's the same amount. So routing efficiencies will provide for a reduction of four regular routes, so. That's kind of where we are right now, well, again, we monitor the legislature, we know that governor's recommendations will be coming out, I think, in about a week, and then we get the February forecast towards the end of the month, so. We'll ask you to approve these, and that's where we start, but we'll be monitoring and changing, and hopefully the legislature's done when we get to June to ask you to approve the budget and get some good numbers. Questions?
That 82% is that more or less than any same size district?
It is, that's, it's 81 to 82, I would say, every district, so, yeah, that's amazing. Not really, I mean, it's the, that's, that's the nature of our business, so, but I've seen that, that's the level that, pretty much anybody.
Question to Jeff.
And Joe, that's a conundrum with. Well, as I say, and Joe, that's a conundrum with, you know, people, you know, they think of school and they think of a building, and when they go, and you have to make cuts, it's really challenging to make cuts because the school is really the people. Eighty-two percent of our expenditures are going to staff, and so that's, you know, I think a lot of times, people don't understand that cuts involve people. There, there is very, very little outside of people. You know, we think of supplies and those other things around building. That, all that makes up eighteen percent, you know? That's the heating oil, and that's all those things, and so I just...
No, trust me, I know. I want to say my company, it's probably seventy percent or more is, with, with, you know, compensation benefits and taxes, so it makes sense to me.
Other questions?
Jeff, about the lower enrollment, I can see that sixty out of how many students we have in school. Is it many, but is that usual, or is that an area?
Um, I think we'll, I think we'll do a better job this year. I think that, as I look, I think what I look at is, when I got here, we had a model over here that we were using, enrollment projection model. I think that we weren't meshing with people, maybe doing staffing and building, so that's, that shows up here that, that we weren't meshed together, but that's not how we're working going forward, so.
But it's not a big, one swing.
Yeah, that's kind of, is that pretty usual, that you're going to have that much of a discrepancy one way or the other?
I think that's, I think that's pretty significant, yeah. To come and say it's a four hundred, yeah, I think that's pretty significant.
And I guess what I'm really saying, is that an issue of how you figure out the enrollment, or is it an issue about how we're serving people? I, I'm wondering if somewhere we should be asking questions.
I think it's how we were doing it, and I just think we, right? I'll say, my department had a, had a model, and I thought we were all on board, but I was kind of new here, so, oh, this group is over here looking at these numbers, so. So we know that'll be flushed out.
And is there benefit in doing another? We just did one last fall, last summer for enrollment study?
Yeah, we did a demographic, that helps, that helps, but we still, that's kind of...
Still, the kindergarten number is the biggest wild card for us, so we just know, know, you have an idea. It doesn't vary wildly, but it varies.
Well, as I say, I think this past year was the first year of what I would say is a sophisticated staffing model, and we've gone back and taken a look at that, like Dave alluded to. The kindergarten projection is, is challenging in that, and I think there was, there's six or seven different ways of calculating that. We're digging into that, and then also trying to take a look at, are there patterns of attrition and addition throughout the year? And some, you know, and we've got, I think, is it nineteen years now of kind of historic data? Really, the last four or five were pulled to take a look at those patterns and even see if we could tighten that up. But that's, that's challenging work, and we've, we've got, that'll take some time and effort. But what I've seen, my observation, looking at the staffing side of things, you know, Keith and Dave have done a lot of work there. The finance side of things with Jeff over the last two, three weeks, they've spent a lot of time together, making sure those systems are matched, that it's, they're sharing the same information. And then we're going to face those challenges of attrition or addition, and how to project the kindergarten together. And yeah, it might be part of, you know, there, there might be, you know, some aspect of enrollment study. I know I've met this past week with somebody from the county. They've got, you know, pretty accurate numbers of kids age zero to four that we don't always, we're not always privy to that access. We get them when they sign up in the school district, so we're trying to see if, you know, we can share some of that data where we could make a more accurate projection based on actual numbers rather than trends or perceptions. And, and we've got a, what is that, the GIS study? We've got, you know, Dave and I are going to look at some of those, even trends too, with, with the company that we use, so.
Are we currently in kindergarten enrollment right now?
What's that?
Are we currently in kindergarten enrollment?
Yes.
Thanks, yeah.
Have you, have you seen any numbers of that?
We haven't, yeah. We haven't done any yet.
We're just getting started.
It's probably, it's...
They've, they've launched it, or I think, but usually, this is now when we're just starting to get numbers in in the next month or two.
And just for some scale?
They usually start with a packet that they send out.
And the packets were sent out two weeks ago?
There you go.
I'm ahead of schedule.
You know, and maybe, and maybe just to add, I got a, I think I mentioned it, or finance, but I got a, I was presenting enrollment in another district, and someone said, "Why don't you just get up and go out to the buildings and count your kids, and then you come back and count?" So, so, just so, you know, there's, there, I mean, it, it changes every day, so it's, you know, we could have this many kids on September first, and this many in June, and it's kind of prorated throughout the year. We've got attrition, we've got tuition payments for students, open enrollment, so it's all those things that, that make up that number. And we don't, you know, when the auditors are here, it's the fall, it's the fall of eighteen, we're, we're saying, this is how many students we have, so we're going to count for this much revenue. We don't really nail that number from the department that till probably the end of December. And it's kind of fixed, so. And that's for the, that's for the prior year, so. If it was as easy as, as just going out today, tomorrow, and counting kids, I could come back and say, here's our revenue.
Well, and even, and we do look at, you know, we're, we're constantly looking at enrollment throughout the year, looking for patterns, and even registrations, and seeing, is there a pattern? What percentage were registered on this date? But again, that budget will be approved in June. Families will move in and out, register after, you know, moving in with younger kids or older kids, and there's just, you know, and our numbers are within that type of a range. We're not talking, you know, to kind of second register. We're not talking enormous numbers, but there's a lot of factors that drive that.
A swing of sixty is less than one percent. It sounds like a lot when you think of sixty kids, but it...
Big number, that four hundred thousand dollars.
It turns into the dollars.
What is the impact of open enrollment? Is there a deadline for students that want to transfer from one district to another?
Yeah, I don't know. January fifteenth. Okay.
So we know those numbers.
Sarah's shaking her head. We're in integration districts?
Oh, sorry, so we have no deadline?
Yeah, we have no deadline, we're in integration district. We receive A and I.
Any more students going out in...
Correct.
All right, so we have a very small revision. We're making a nice addition to our fund balances, so it's going to be a very productive year. And the look for FY twenty is small surplus, but that's conservative, so that's all going to be on this budget. So I'd say it's a great update. Thanks for that, Jeff.
And I know we're jumping ahead to the David Keats show, but no staffing investment is a big part.
Yeah, kind of leads into there.
A big part, yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
You bet.
Thank you.
So with that, some to you guys. Dave and Keith, you guys want to come on down? Well, Dave's already up there. Oh, Dave's going to change sheets. Change seats.
Try again?
Yeah.
He's coming to his hair.
Out of order.
You're rolling yourself.
I've never done that. Never done that.
He deserved it. I got, actually, I got it, Sarah.
That's great.
Can you put these graphic up there?
I can. I, Jeff, I need the lockdown given.
So for David Watson, preliminary staffing is the topic.
Yes. Okay, and we're going to talk a little bit about the enrollment.
So as far as preliminary staffing, what we're really going to talk about is the process we use. It's beyond what Jeff showed with the character communicated that we're rolling staff forward. We're not projecting any specific numbers here tonight. We're going to show you kind of the tool that we use to do that, that's based on enrollment, and kind of what the variables are, so it's really informational, but in the future, we can see actual number here.
So, so first, we're just going to talk this sort of the graphic of how we go about the process. So you guys have talked a little bit here about the establishment of the budget parameters. And then the question is, are we adding staff? And that's part of the assumption in terms of the budget. Are we reducing staff? Are we staying relatively the same? And I think what you've heard here tonight is Jeff saying, we're anticipating staying relatively the same. But the, the arrows going both ways sort of indicate that student enrollment really drives budget, right? I mean, each, I've been in districts where we talk about, that's a backpack. Each kid has a little backpack of sixty-five hundred dollars or whatever, but that, that sort of drives both things. And then when we look at student enrollment, we, we typically have rolled each grade up, like first through twelve, we roll up those numbers. Like David said, only sitting over there, about kindergarten numbers are really, were, we're, we have been intending to duplicate the prior year's kindergarten, but it is awful, awfully difficult to figure out. We've had some of those. This year, we ran this model that Dave's going to show you for every school, and we, we have sort of seen that there was very little change. I think we were, at the end of May, June, that enrollment pretty much was the same as it was moving forward, so we can possibly make adjustments at that point in terms of our staffing. There was one school in particular that had a really, had a thirty, thirty-five student increase in kindergarten, so that shows you the unpredictability of it. But that's typically how we do the student, you know, how we look at how many kids are in there. That enrollment sort of drives what we're, this model's going to show you. Then some additional factors is the number of classes or credits a student takes, particularly at the secondary level, the number of classes per FTE that a teacher actually teaches. And then we get down to this whole class target idea, the number of students in a class, and how large of a range will we tolerate? We'll talk a little bit about that with the model that Dave's going to throw up.
So the easier one to understand the process is the elementary, so we'll start with that here. And these are, these are not any particular school, but it'll give you an idea. So if I took an elementary school, we have a target for each of those grade levels, and then we will start with, this is what we ended the year at. So for us right now, we could almost say, for planning purposes, it's the end of eighteen, nineteen. So we said, this is how many kids we have, February eleventh right now, and this is how many teachers we had at each, and this is what class sizes that generated for that. So this would be a snapshot of what is happening right now. Projecting forward, here's this real simple model. We move everybody up a grade, so one twenty-two to first grade. This one twenty-five goes from first to second and so forth. And we just use as a kindergarten prediction, a projection to start it, what we had last year. So this school, if you look at it, is graduating essentially a class of one forty-nine. They're bringing in a class with this projection of one twenty-two. They're dropping from seven sixty-one to seven thirty-four, okay? Then what we actually start doing is running reports out of our system, okay? Starting in, in this model, you can see it started in April. So we projected at one twenty-two, kindergarten was at ninety-five. And Keith, Natasha, and I all last summer ran these reports a lot, and we tried to see what was happening. And so to not single out one building, we, we, again, these numbers are manufactured a little bit, but it faces reality a little bit, too.
Look at all those deltas, right?
Lots of deltas, yeah.
I mean, just from month to month, you're talking about twenty, thirty. Even when you're running it every ten days, there's swings.
Especially, again, it's the kindergarten in this case that changed a lot of. But if you look here, this one's at one twenty-four there, six months, or ten, what would that be? Seven months later, you know, nine months later, they're at one twenty-two. They're two down, exactly the same, plus one, delta, no delta, plus five, okay? So you can see, those are pretty stable. In this example, the kindergarten number moved a lot. Even from, if you looked at the end of June, the kindergarten number moved a lot. So we were doing this because we wanted to respond as quickly as possible to where there's an issue. Here's how we kept track of this. We plug in the enrollments as they change, and we watch what happens to the class targets. So this one at six sections is now into our caution zone, yellow. If they're two and a half above the target, add three more, and I'll just change this to one thirty-eight, you'll see, it then shows us, hey, you're there, now you're three over, you've got to start looking at this. If for some reason it dropped, I wouldn't do this like that, but let me go even lower than that, a hundred. We have something that kind of tells us just the...
Your overstack.
If we're, we have too much there, okay? And so, I'm going to put this one back. That's the idea.
That's it.
And so the principals are watching, you know, they have access to this model now, too. There's always this question of what's happening, and so they have a close eye on how we do this. As you can see, it's driven by how many kids we have and what the target is. And then how many sections we allocate determines that. You say, should we make that, oops, should we make that a seven? That puts me a little bit below, but we're going to ride with it at six for a little while until maybe we get another couple rounds in, okay? We also off of these calculate the number of specialists that it takes per section, and so they would wind up with about two FIA Ed, one and a half music, and so forth, okay? We roll all these up across our schools, and we get total numbers, all right? Good on elementary, okay? Secondary, this, this is set up very similarly, okay? We have an initial date where we kind of allocate their staffing to them. We give them an initial number. And the allocation they get off of this model is meant to cover their core classes, where they earn credits. In this model, we're assuming a kid can earn up to fourteen credits a year. We're saying average due to study halls or other non-credit-bearing courses that a kid earns is thirteen and a half. Our target is thirty-one, and a teacher can teach ten credits of sections a year. That's what full-time is. These variables right here, combined with how many kids we have, help us figure out our staff, okay? So off of these numbers, these initial numbers, this is the FTE they would need, okay? And this is the form, I don't know if you care that much about maybe the formula, but it takes those four variables into account. Enrollment, class target, how many sections a teacher can teach, and, what was the other? I forgot.
Out of how many?
Oh, yeah, out of how many, how many credits they take, correct.
Well, that's something we, for those of us who are involved with the converting to block schedule and the teacher negotiations, going from a five out of seven period, we were seventy-one percent efficient. Going to a three out of four, you're seventy-five percent efficient. So you get, you actually gain efficiency and save money by going to a three out of four block schedule.
Yes, and we, and this will take care of that by just changing the, the maxes and how many they teach. What we did initially is, we also put something in here to say, initially, we want to, we're not distributing a hundred percent of the allocation under the shoot, so we say, in this school, we'd allocate forty-three point two. You have, kind of have a point seven buffer that we're holding onto for a little while to see what happens. We also, as we're tracking, we keep track of what's happening to enrollment, and in this case, they went from down to three forty-seven to three forty-nine. They lost two kids at sixth grade, one kid at seventh grade. They added four at eighth grade, and it, if this change, I'm going to change one of these to a bigger number to show a change. If this actually jumped to four hundred and we gained fifty-one kids, that takes another two point two FTE at that time to cover it, okay? So we are tracking this all the time and as late as possible, trying to adjust. We're trying to see if they can create a workable master schedule with that ninety-eight-five allocation, but knowing that if there are conflicts or things that aren't working, we have a little bit in the bank. This model includes kind of the district allocation of staff and not, as those of you around the finance committee maybe have talked about, any compensatory ads that somebody might make, which would not be part of what Jeff rolls for anyway, okay? Questions for Keith?
Well, just to clarify, the compensatory hires are made primarily by the building principals, right?
Correct.
But are those renewable contracts that, you know, is the multi, even hire somebody for that? Does that go away after compensatory funding, or are they part of the bargaining?
It depends on what they, I mean, they, they can decide that, but then they're locked, and then they... And then they block that in moving forward. If they put it actually to an FTE that they're going to repeat.
Okay.
Some of them anticipate that they're not going to have it. So they will do like a one-year kind of a, one-year assignment.
So we're doing this on a regular basis and just kind of reset it here and even work with the principals on this today.
Okay. Just to kind of piggyback, piggyback Matt's question. So you bring somebody and think, okay, this is just going to be a one-year assignment, but then the following year, we still need you. So you do another one-year contract. At what point do they be considered permanent?
If it was an actual teacher and they did the entire year, and then the entire year, the next year, they will have served two years of the probationary, three years. So they'd have another year that they'd be on probation. But then if they, we kept them on another year, then they would be a regular staff member.
Okay.
If it was the whole year. Yeah, usually if, if, after that first year, they think they're going to continue to fund that, then it probably would convert to a regular, you know, regular position. But most, most of our elementary principals, for example, don't have that kind of compad really, vice versa, the most compad because of the number of students. But they just have a little bit to supplement.
Just to clarify what Keith is saying on that. In your scenario, Paul, if somebody was being funded through compensatory three years in a row, and then they became a regular, I think what Keith is saying, they would move into one of these positions that's funded through your regular allocation. They would be out of that kind of, there is some consistent flow with compensatory, but to some degree, you have to look at it as one-time money. You don't want an ongoing interest to be coming out of there. Yeah.
Because if you hire a kid, there could be a thirty-year commitment. And if you had year to your funding, it...
Right. But there's times where you...
Yeah.
Okay? So this was really about the process that we're using in that overview. Other questions?
I can see this is a really useful tool for principals.
So to Jeff's point about creating that staffing contingency, just rolling everybody forward regardless of retirement or resignation, what do we do to incent teachers to notify us early of their retirement? Or is that, have we?
Yeah. We don't have an incentive per se. We have something in a contract, you know, that date that people should let us know. But sometimes you still don't get, yeah, we don't have an incentive necessarily for people to tell us that. Although I think, I think our principals and people have been pretty respectful of it, you know, in terms of principals go to folks and say, hey, if anybody's thinking or, you know, let us know.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we've gotten a lot of really layups. I think people have been pretty respectful of it.
Because that, when they retire, that allows us to hire. I mean, I understand teachers who've earned the right to retire on their own terms, not wanting to be recognized or, okay, all spring they're dealing with other staffing. But it really helps for the staffing process to know early where we're at.
Absolutely.
And we have a May first deadline for, or not May first, March first deadline for that kind of thing. And people let us know. People are pretty good about it.
Yeah. Thank you.
How long have we had this model?
This is our second year.
It's simple yet sophisticated. The, the lengths within it and the very, the flexibility it provides is phenomenal. And yet, I followed it. Certainly not something I do, but I followed your presentation. I can see how useful a tool it is. So I'm pleased to see, I mean, I can see benefiting from this and yours gone by. It's a wonderful tool.
We used it last year, then took a feedback from principals and it made Keith and Natasha and I make changes.
Get better.
So we make it better.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Very insightful.
All right. We'll move on to communications department report. Ashley, get it going up.
Yes.
And if you're driving over there, you're going to come up here.
Hold on. I'll come up.
Okay.
All right. So every week, Mike meets with a member of cabinet. And a few weeks ago, we were talking and thought it would be a good idea for me to come present information to you all about communications department, how we serve the district, go over some of our goals, and get some feedback from you all on what we can do to increase engagement and improve communications. All right. So I'll just jump right into it. Our communications department, the mission is to provide accurate and timely information to students, parents, staff, and community members about our school district. So what does a communications department do for a district? We communicate internally and externally. We handle the school district's publications. That includes newsletters as well as internal news releases and any important announcements. We also write news releases and send those to the media in hopes that we can get some positive news coverage. Amanda gets several of those from me. And we also serve as the media liaison for the district. So if the media has a question, they would reach out to us first, and then we can work with the superintendent, the school board, or the teachers to help them get the story and the information they need. And we also handle imaging and marketing. That means promoting strengths and achievements for our teachers, students, basically telling our story. We also do a lot of publicizing our students and students and staff, talking about the good things happening in our school district. You guys probably see those emailers every Friday, Thursday, Friday. Yes, they're catching on. People are emailing us now saying, hey, include this in Good News Friday. We'd appreciate it. So that's what we wanted. Also serve as an information station for the district. If someone pops up at the district office and Connie and Brenda need help getting information or answering questions, they call us and go to the front. People also call us a lot, just asking those questions sometimes and needing information, whether it's brochures or pamphlets, anything to help communicate information about what our district does. Also, public relations trainer, though our new superintendent, he's a natural, he doesn't need any help in this area. But sometimes when our teachers do interviews with the media, we want to go for like, questions we think the media would ask. That's why it's good that I'm a former television reporter, Crystal McNally, who's our communication specialist. She's a former TV reporter anchor as well. So we can kind of come up with some test questions and throw those at people to say, hey, this is what they may ask. That way you can handle yourself during the interview. Guiding values, accuracy, timeliness, relevance, and this is a big need, transparency. Our audience, of course, students and parents, teachers and staff, community partners, as well as the public, of course, taxpayers. We have several ways of communicating information. We use traditional media. That includes newspapers, television. We use the City of Shakopee Public Access and Savage TV online. They actually air our school board meetings, Savage and the city. So that's a great resource. We use the red folders for elementary schools. We send out emails also during bad weather. We had a lot of this last week, those robo-calls. Man, you said you got several of those from me. Text messages, our district website. We send out email blasts and social media. So any of you on social media, if you see our stories posting on Facebook, Twitter, like, retweet. Don't forget our hashtag, Shakopee Taking a look at some of the things we do on a daily basis, piggybacking off of our social media, we check Facebook and Twitter every day to make sure that we're retweeting and liking any mentions that people have posted about our school district. So that just helps push out the word even more. Maybe also check social media groups to kind of get a grasp if there are any issues or rumors, anything we need to address, that sort of thing.
Ashley, just to show my ignorance on social media.
Oh, goodness.
And I know that. When you say you have, do you have to look for this stuff, or can you, can you put a term in so that it flags it for you?
You can, you can do a few things. You can go to our, let's say Twitter, for instance, Shakopee Schools, and it will pop up our homepage. And on our homepage, it will show you all of our tweets.
Your tweets, know what I'm saying? What I'm asking maybe wasn't clear. If Joe tweeted something about Shakopee Schools.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know that because you have a flag that says, oh, somebody tweeted?
Yeah, he can, he can at us, and that means that he tags us.
Yeah, yeah.
In whatever he's posting.
And you were notified of that.
Yes, we get a notification. Yes. And then that's another good point to our hashtag, hashtag Shakopee Schools. Hashtags are a way to push your content and to search your content. So if I go to Twitter and put the pound sign, Shakopee Schools, everything that people have tweeted about our school district using that hashtag, it'll pop up. He'll get there.
No.
We gotta get you on Twitter. I need to add that to my goal list.
That's going to be a whole...
Kids would love that.
I'm going to do that.
I'll be your first follower.
There you go.
Here's what I made for dinner.
I won't go over all of these point by point, but just kind of a few of these. Some of our other tasks that we do throughout the week, every, every week, building secretaries, they'll send out a list of events happening at the school for that week and upcoming week. So that's the way that we get a lot of our news stories. Say, oh, we need to pop into Sunny Path, and we need to pop into Jackson or the high school this week. This is exciting. We need to cover this. When you drive past East and West Middle Schools and see those marquee signs, we're adding that information too. And that has really caught on with the community too, because we get emails from outside sources saying, hey, can you communicate this? This would be good information for the community and for teachers and students to know about. So that's a good resource. Okay, there we go. Tasks also include, of course, dealing with the media, pushing good news stories. We've had a lot of those the last week. We had a story about our CAP students in the Shakopee Valley News, Michael Pierre on Twin Cities PBS. We also had Star Tribune covering cold. So it's been, it's been a busy, but good week.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yes. And our Alice training that we're hosting at the high school. Yes, great job.
And by the way, my, my wife said she was very impressed. She watched you actually.
Well, I appreciate that. I've always said I've got a face for radio, so.
And he was on the radio too about, what, a month ago now? With WCCO Radio talking about cold. Yeah. All right. And also when there's, of course, an incident happens, we're the first contact, or we should be the first contact of, the first contact for the media so that we can figure out how we want to release information, what information we need to release, that sort of thing. And also, my two favorite words, dad requests. Other tasks that we are responsible for, covering school board meetings. After school board meetings, we put out what's referred to as the board brief. We edit the videos, post those online in our YouTube page, and get those over to the city of Shakopee and Savage so they can air those in their public access channels. Also attending the Arts and Communication Industry Council. That's been fun, a nice break from the regular day-to-day duties, just getting out and meeting with our industry experts.
I think we have to thank a new member, don't we? Ashley, or, or Ashley, Amanda, aren't you on the, yeah, we've talked about that.
Yeah, I attended one home meeting.
Well, still, just I think it's great. We talked about...
It was awesome. I really enjoyed it. I like being immunated in a safe place.
And not our local press to be involved in that council for a group.
Thanks, Amanda. And also special events. The last was the Academy's Destination, planning that. We also had a large part in planning attendance areas, the forums, the community meetings that were held around that. So the next event that we're working on is the end of year staff celebration for a new human resources department. And that will be in May, May sixteenth, May sixteenth.
Ashley, before you move on, I want to give you another compliment. Again, having seen the iteration and evolution, is a better word, over the years, I really like and appreciate the school board meeting updates, the board briefs, and how rapid, I mean, the next day. You're, you're probably drafting it when you're sitting down there.
That's what I'm doing. That's what I'm typing.
But I mean, that's a great way to communicate what happens to anybody who wants to read it. And I just compliment you on doing that so well and so thoroughly and so quickly.
Oh, well, thank you for always returning my emails whenever I have a question. So that's appreciated.
Sometimes it eats me whole.
I'm being handed, where are you?
And I just thought of that when I was pregnant. Because when I got home, I was already tested. And we spend a lot of time on the website. The website is really important because this is really the first impression of the school district. If current students or current parents have a question, they need information, this is where they're going first. People are thinking about moving to the district, this is where they're going. So this is the first impression of our district. So it needs to be, stay updated. It needs to stay clean with clear, concise, accurate information. Moving forward, I mentioned this briefly at the beginning of the presentation, but we focus a lot as well on the story content, telling our story, getting out into the buildings to highlight what's really happening with our students and our teachers. And here's some examples of that. As I mentioned, we focus on making sure the website is up to date with accurate information. This could be an all-day, every-day task for Crystal and myself. So that's why we took the initiative to form what we refer to as webmasters. Each building has a webmaster. Each department at the district office has a webmaster. So we brought those groups of people together separate times, and we trained them on how to remove information from the website, how to add information to the website, how to upload documents, how to upload pictures. That way, it's a group effort to make sure that that information stays updated. So it's really a continuous effort with our IT department and webmasters. It can be something as simple as making sure that the documents are in PDF versus Word. That sounds small, but it really makes a big difference because everyone can't open a Word document on his or her phone. PDF, that translates across all forms. And we hold trainings, and we do follow-ups after trainings. Hey, do you guys have any questions? Do you have any recommendations for topics for the next training? That way, it's a continuous process of growth and development. And here are some examples of some recent projects. I mentioned Good News Friday earlier, winter newsletter. We're actually in the process now of getting quotes to print and mail a newsletter. We haven't done that in a while. So that's our focus right now, finding great stories in our district to publish. The kindergarten guide. If you've been to West lately, you've probably seen this sign at the welcome desk. So some goals for our communications department is to look into a survey so that we can understand from a community perspective, what's working, what's not working, preferred method of communication, and what our new opportunities are. Any new channels that we haven't thought of or haven't explored. And also to increase engagement with the community, looking for those opportunities for Mike to get out and engage with the community, for you all, the board, to get out and engage with the community. So whether that's forums, community presentations, Q and A sessions, really open to anything that you guys think would be great. So feedback, give feedback on what you think is working, what's not working, and if you have any questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
Going back to, I mean, you have a lot going on here, so I don't want to add to your work.
Oh, no, you're fine.
But going back to the webmaster where you're working with the different schools on putting content out there.
Yes.
Do you guys ever do any training to add like their professional development days, talking about how important communication is to get to parents on a more regular basis?
We don't do any professional development days, but every year for the new, new teacher orientation, we get in front of the new teachers and talk about communication at that time.
How about some of the older teachers?
More experienced.
That's a good idea, though.
Younger teachers.
Yes. I mean, I bring this up, it's so trivial, but examples are things like dress
in your pajama day. That may have been communicated to a parent a month ago in a newsletter. Okay, well, we're very busy people. And if that kid misses that because the poor parent never paid attention to that, and then that kid is left out. You know, that's very trivial in my opinion. But for that kid, that could be a really big deal. Or even different events going on for the school, you know, like Valentine's Day, or just different things. Sometimes we get those communications in a monthly communication, but seriously, a lot of stuff goes on in a month. And I know a lot of teachers don't update the websites, and I know a lot of times, things don't get updated on the main page of the, of the schools. I'm just wondering if there's any...
Well, that's something we can definitely work with the principals to work on together. But I know the buildings, they send out separate newsletters to parents. Some do it, I think some do it on a weekly, is Jeff still here?
Yeah.
On a weekly basis, or some do it on a monthly basis. But we can definitely work with them to find out, hey, what are the big events going on, so that we can publicize those a little more, so that people can put them on their radar.
I just, from my perspective, I get an email. I don't get a whole lot of stuff in the red folder.
Okay.
So it's just more communication, I guess, at building level.
Okay.
And I know that, I don't know how much responsibility that is on you guys, but...
That's something we can definitely work with them on, to make sure that parents...
A lot of schools don't even, not, a lot of schools don't even use Facebook or Twitter or whatever. So, I mean, I follow you. You have a ton of stuff all the time. So there's a lot of good district information. I just don't have your lot of building information.
Building information. That's something we can look into. That's an idea. Thank you.
No pressure.
No, no, it's fine.
So I've got a couple of, I mean, I have a lot of questions, but one of them that I wanted to bring forward is how we communicate. I wanted to bring forward is how we communicate. So is there like a database cleansing that can be done? Or, for example, sometimes I get two of the same email, sometimes I don't get them at all. Like when the school was dismissed on, what day was it last week? Wednesday, Thursday at middle school early? My husband got the email, but I didn't.
Are both of you listed as contacts in Infinite Campus?
Yep.
Then that's something that you would need to notify the school about, and then they can check the settings to see how you're listed, like, who's supposed to be getting the information?
Right. Because I got it on my school email account, which I only have access to on my iPad.
Yeah.
But I always got the notifications before I have a school address. So, I don't know. But I know I usually get at home, my home phone rings, my cellphone will ring twice.
Is this for weather?
For any, yeah, for any type of, you know, sometimes the principal at East will call and reminder, parent conferences or whatever, that we get multiple calls.
Yeah, that's all routed back to Infinite Campus and the way your settings are set up. Every parent's settings are different, depending on their preferences. Some parents opt to receive emails, phone calls, and text messages. Some parents just opt to receive a phone call.
But should I get two?
Two.
On the same number?
We do, because my husband, I put mine on a grid for his name.
No, I'm saying, like, so my cellphone, it will ring twice. My home phone will ring once. My husband's cellphone rings.
You're getting one as a parent and one as a board member.
One as a parent, one as a staff member.
I think it's all back to your settings. So probably you just have to look and see what that is.
Because I have changed it.
Because what we send out, Kristy, with weather especially, we have different groups that we send messages to. Like, the first message, we send to staff. So you'll get a notification for that, however you're set up as a staff member. And if you're set up as a parent, when we start sending notifications out to parents, you'll get that round two. Does that make sense?
It does, but I still wonder why all of a sudden I don't get emails sent to my home address like I used to, and they only go to my school. And I haven't done a thing.
That happened to me too. I had to, I called my school, and I said, do you need to set me up on my home, not on my work, not on my school board.
But, okay. Because I haven't done anything.
I didn't do anything either. It just happened.
That's weird, because like the Good Fridays, I get at home, and I get...
Because I never use my school email address, because I remember it's too long. So I, it just happened one day.
Kristy, I'll work with our IT department, and I'll include you in the email thread, so we can figure out what's going on. But they'll have to go into your account and look.
Angela, did you say yours changed as well? Or did it change?
It did. It's hard for me to tell if it changed a hundred percent or not, because we were, I was getting emails on my personal phone call, or my first personal email. It was rolling. And then I switched, and then I got nothing on my home, and everything was coming through the school. So it happens both, happened both for Shakopee Public Schools and South Most Metro, everything's going through the school board email. And I don't know why, I don't know if it's the teacher looked at my email and put that in there. I don't know why it happened.
We can use these guys as samples for us to just see.
Yeah. But I'm all fixed, so I contact.
But I'll start an email thread, and we can figure out what's happening.
And the other question I had is, is there a communications plan, whether it's on an annual basis, school year basis, that is in alignment with what our goals are, what our strategic plan is as a board?
We have a plan, a plan looking out when it comes to the academies. I've been, I've been here going on three years, and the reason that we don't have that is because my first two years here were survival and just focusing on that. And then it was one person, the Communications Department, and then I was gone, so it's been kind of survival and trying to get back on track. But in talking with Mike, that's something that we can work on doing, to make sure that our goals and what we're doing aligns with where the district is trying to go.
And then one thing that wasn't talked about was the Citizens Advisory Communications.
Citizens Advisory Communications Committee.
Maybe you can talk a little bit about what they do and what the focus is.
Well, we have about fifteen members right now. We meet once every month. The goal is to meet six times per school year. And the goal really is to give input, to get their feedback on what we're communicating, what we should be communicating, what issues need to be addressed, and how we should address those issues. If we have something that's happening at any given moment, whether it's with the budget, attendance areas, we take the topic to them and get their feedback. So it's really a sounding board, because we have members who are not only staff, but parents. And then some people who aren't staff members or parents, they're community members. So we can get the feel from all angles based on that committee.
So how does the committee work? I mean, I think it's been what, a year since it's been going? How is...
It's been working very well. I would say we have a great group of people who are committed and dedicated to coming to the table with ideas. Some of the things that we've implemented have been because of that committee. Before we implemented the academies, we asked their opinion and got great feedback on them, from them, on the videos that we should pursue, like, what are some of the questions that parents are asking? Some of the questions were, my child is afraid he or she will be stuck in an academy. So that was one of the videos we produced, but it's been, it's been going well.
Other questions? I have two quick ones. I think we've done this in the past, you didn't list it, because you list a lot of things. But I'm thinking you do this, with all the development that's going on in Shakopee, don't you guys have like a Realtor packet? Or something that you, in thinking now with, again, they're reaching the point where they're really starting to build homes, just what are we doing? How do we partner with the Realtors, so they have materials to share with their prospective buyers?
We actually worked with John Canny. We reached out to him before we started putting it together and asked him, hey, what are some things that we need to make sure that we put into this guide? What's the best way to start reaching out to real estate agents in the area? So we worked with him on that, and he gave us his input. It's complete, it's on our website now. Realtors have been reaching out to us, asking us for that information. A church reached out to me last week, wanting the information too. So now that we're in a better position than we were last year, even two years ago, we are going to look at printing that versus putting it on our website for others to print, looking at making some copies, so that it'll be easily available.
I would hope that with all the development taking place, that we're seeing more utilization of that. And that's a rhetorical comment, and I don't know if it is, but I would hope it would be so. That's one. The other one is, when you were talking about all the things, just the sheer volume of things you have to do, the web updates, and is there any way, and this is just purely a thought, with the Arts and Communications Academy, which is kind of where this would lie, we're looking for kids, kids are looking for internship opportunities? Could we not have internal interns who have an interest in that area? And this, again, is not to put you on the spot, but maybe other places in the district, that, you know, be it finance or HR, or whatever it might be. It would just seem like this area in particular, though, with all the social media, et cetera, and it can be kind of task-oriented? Seems like it could be a really good place for internship opportunities for our kids. Have we even thought about that? Maybe it's too soon, I don't know.
I hadn't thought about that, per se, because we are used to partnering with CAP students.
Right.
But this would be along those same lines.
But not every kid's going to be at CAPS. And the CAPS program tends to not just handle those kids, in terms of that particular employer or whatever, but I'm just wondering if there might be an opportunity internally, you've got plenty of work. I don't know, again, I'm thinking out loud, and I'm not trying to commit anybody to anything, it's just maybe something worth exploring.
Definitely something to explore.
Okay. Any other comments? Great work, great summary, lots of good stuff.
Some stuff.
Thanks very much, Ashley. And thanks, Crystal, to anyone else that touches this, but thank you very much to you guys.
And let me know if you all ever have any recommendations or have any questions about anything.
Okay.
Thanks for keeping us connected.
No, you're welcome.
Got to join Twitter, Reggie.
And not hold your breath. All right, moving on to, I think, our last big bucket item. Mike, you want to talk to Trust Edge?
Sure. I know we've, we've referenced Trust Edge a couple times in different things we've been doing. I know the folks who attended the MSBA conference got to see David Horsager present a keynote. I know somebody who bought the book. I know at least a couple board members are attending a conference, March 17th and 18th. I'm planning to attend that as well. There's room for one or two more people, so if you have an interest, let us know. Sunday evening, March 17th, and then basically the fourth day, Monday, March 18th, in St. Peter. But I just wanted to, you know, I know I've touched on it a little bit when I, on the Redmond's Wrap at the end of the week, and just wanted to share a little bit deeper, as I'm starting to reread, or I'm reading his new version of his book, The Trust Edge: How Top Leaders Gain Faster Results, Deeper Relationships, and a Stronger Bottom Line. I would say that David Horsager's main audience is primarily a business audience, it's definitely a leadership audience. And, you know, sort of kind of digging through again, and just, you know, sometimes I think we talk about it, and we go, oh, that's just sort of a soft skill, or that's kind of flowery, it's how to, how to be nice, or how to, how to do those things. He would argue vehemently that it's not just a soft skill. He's done an incredible amount of research, in his team and other folks, on what is trust, and then, you know, he would say trust is tangible, learnable, and measurable. And the costs are very, very high when the trust is low, and a lack of trust can often be a company's biggest expense. And I wanted to just roll through one example, and, you know, kind of his eight pillars at the foundation of this. But I wanted to, and this is a rhetorical question, but how much does lack of trust cost our organization in terms of relationships, loyalty, retention, and influence? And then I would even say, how much does it cost in terms of inefficient use of resources? And I'm going to give one example, not because it's this earth-shattering example, maybe because it isn't. But I think it's one that we repeat dozens, if not, you know, far more times than that. And it, you know, we recently had an incident, you know, our communication team, you know, did what they did, just perfect timing, following up the communications presentation. You see how hard they worked, you see how professional they provide stuff. Well, we received critical feedback in terms of our communication of this particular event. And it came in the form of, why was the school district so slow to communicate? Was really the pressing detail. They kept hitting on, why are you so slow to communicate? Why didn't the school district communicate better? And then they threw in, it was an event that we were working on with the police, and, you know, we cut, you know, the police were getting positive feedback. Police, and then we were getting sort of, being used as a measuring tool there, that, well, the police department communication was better and faster than the communication of the school district. So what did we do? We do what we typically do. We went back and we picked apart the communication, detail by detail, processed it. I lay awake at night going, what the heck? It seemed like we did everything just right. Why are we getting that criticism? And of course, we go right back to it, and we pick it apart again, and go, how can we communicate better? How can we communicate better? Well, that wasn't the issue. And that was really the, what I would say was the aha moment, that the communication was fine. I would say the communication was well-done, even. And so, the criticism, however, stemmed from a lack of trust. And I think it's interesting to note, we even did that communication in partnership with the police, shared the message, and sent it out at exactly the same time. And remember, we got criticized for being slow. We were, they were held up as an example of, wow, the police communicated way better than you did. And I even lost sight of that and went, wait a second, we communicated with them in real time. And that was the aha moment, is, you know, it wasn't the communication, it's that trust, and it's that cost of trust. And so, I think it's really important that we continue to work hard to rebuild trust. I see that happening. I see great things happening in the district. We want to be open, we want to be transparent. I'm going to quickly roll through David Horsager's The Trust Edge, the eight pillars of trust. Number one is clarity. You know, be clear about objectives, priorities. You know, make sure that the people we're working with know those things. And then, how many can communicate, you know, our objectives, our top priorities, you know, quickly and clearly? He really focuses on three questions to get to clarity. And I need these questions asked of me, to be quite honest. They'll say something, and I would love it if the response is, well, how? And then the next one is, well, no, exactly how? Well, how are you going to do that? And I think we need to refine clarity and be really focused on being clear. The second pillar is compassion. We trust people who think beyond themselves. It's one of the reasons I love working in the world of education. There are a lot of people who think beyond themselves. They show up every day trying to help students, trying to build a better world. David Horsager mentions, the number one example of that is mom. You know, most people's moms, they go over and above, and they always think beyond themselves. And, you know, he gives an example of Delta Airlines changed the way they treated their own people, and guess what? The customers started, started being treated better as a result. He talks about character as a pillar. You know, sincerity would be related to that. Do what's right, not what's easy. And then he asks a question, and it's a great question, is it better to be trustworthy or trusted? And there's no comparison. It's much better to be trustworthy. And then competency, it's kind of like the conservation of energy, you know, input shapes output, input always equals output. What are people bringing to the process? Be aware of that, and work to improve that. Talks about commitment as a pillar. Commitment breeds commitment. People love working with people who are committed, committed to something bigger than themselves. Talks a lot about personal accountability. And then he even gives, and there's great research to support this, specific accountability, having a specific accountability appointment increases the chances of reaching a goal from ten to ninety-five percent. And when I read that, I immediately reflect to some of those things when I was working directly with principals. Hey, I want to get better at this. Great, I'm going to check in with you once a month, just to see how you're doing on that goal. And guess what? Just that monthly check-in improves that performance.
You should call that inspect what you expect.
Yeah, exactly. Inspect what you expect and do it consistently. And it's, and everybody has the same goal, but human nature sometimes gets in the way. So it's a, it's a supportive thing. It's not meant to be, you know, punitive in any way. Say, I'm just going to check in, tell me how you're doing. And typically, when you know somebody's coming to check in, you're doing it. And it's kind of fun then to learn that. I use a coaching example. I used to coach a lot. I would always start a season and go, so, how do you want to be this year? Hey, we want to be good. We want to have a great season. Ah, so what? So does everybody else. That is not, I've never met a team in my life that didn't want to have a really good season. So just wanting to have it.
What's up? You don't watch Twins baseball, do you?
They start, every year, right now, they're getting excited about...
Their time for first place.
And when you're dealing with high school students, they're always, what, so what? Who cares? You want to be good. So does everybody else. What are you going to do? What are you going to do to be different than the others? What are you going to do to separate yourselves? And he talks, and that's that accountable culture. Create a target or a goal, have a clear commitment, have a metric, how are you going to measure that? You know, have a clear check-in, clear rewards and consequences. And I think that's, that's some of those ways that we can separate, you know, from just that desire to be good, to actually becoming good. And then, connection is a very, very important pillar. One of the things in our society, this is maybe the old social studies teacher in me, we have the myth in our society of the solitary genius or the lone hero. Very, very, very few, if any, of those things really happen. They were typically done by teams and collaboration. Scientists, we build this one up a lot, the lone scientist, you know, even in our movies. Scientists are constantly building on the work of previous scientists and others, and collaborating and improving it. And so, collaboration is huge. David Horsager gives the, the number one trait of the most magnetic people on earth is?
Gratitude.
Gratitude. Be grateful, you know, and I think that's a really valuable lesson. Contribution, you must deliver results to be trusted. At the end of the day, that, that's what matters, reward results. Be honest and open about making mistakes. We're all going to do that. Recognize specific contributions, you know, general praise is nice, specific praise is much, much more meaningful. Delayed decision-making increases confusion, clutter and stress. And then he talks a lot about consistency. It's the little things done consistently that make the biggest difference. I had my own little editorial on the bottom. I try to be real clear, I've got a twenty-six-year-old son and a twenty-three-year-old son. My, my message to them is show up, do what you say you're going to do, follow through. So show up and follow through. If you do those things, you're going to be successful. So, that was my little, you know, kind of spiel. I wanted to go a little more in depth with some of that. I, I think it's just great learning. I've been familiar with David Horstager for a number of years. I find the research fascinating. It's about human development, about improving folks and so, just wanted to share that with you.
Have you guys heard him speak at MSBA?
We did. You did a two-day keynote.
Two, well.
Yeah.
Half of it at the opening and half of it at the closing.
I don't know if I've ever seen a keynote over two days before that.
And the book is very good.
And Reggie, I follow him on Twitter.
Joe, if you send that link to Reggie's daughter, she'll follow him on Twitter and relay the.
I'll, I'll take care of that. You don't have to. All right. Good stuff, Reggie.
But again, and I think it was that first story that was, we've shared, you know, those of us in cabinet and others. You just go, how much time are we spending really looking at the wrong things? And beating ourselves up over it and it's important. We want to be efficient users of resources. Yep, if somebody, if we receive critical feedback, we're going to take that to heart, we're going to examine it and look at it. But we also have to be aware that sometimes that critical feedback isn't criticizing what we think it is. And give ourselves permission to move on, move forward and do great things for kids. And so, that was really why I showed that example.
All right. We're nearing the finish line here, folks. Very productive, but a little bit longer meeting. I don't think we have any further discussion or action items, so we'll skip past that. Seven, eight other, we'll go around the horn. I think we've had a couple of committee meetings, so this might be a good time to just touch on those. I'm going to start, I'll go a little left again. Angela, anything to add? Okay, Kristy?
We had a policy committee meeting tonight. And we are kind of picking up where the last group left off with looking at a few things. Policy five thirty-three, we're going to bring that back to the committee hopefully soon.
One last one?
Yes. And then the policy five thirty-four, which is the.
Meals.
Meals, unpaid meals. From what I understand, that will be brought back to the, to the board for a first reading at our next meeting for review.
Like in two weeks?
Yes.
Oh, great.
And then, Mike and Sarah are going to take a stab at the six hundred series, which we talked about in somewhat depth tonight. So, that's an update from that committee.
Here, thank you.
Nothing, actually, just one quick question. I said we've got the eighteen nineteen school calendar attached here and I love it as a practice. I've started getting questions from friends and neighbors about the nineteen twenty school calendar. Do we know if that's going to be coming up anytime in the? Is it on the website?
Okay.
Thank you. I have my own other.
Approved it, it's.
That's what I thought, I couldn't recall.
But that's a good clarification.
It is online.
Perfect.
It is.
Thank you. All right. Yeah. Ashley, then, else?
No, nothing to add.
Derek?
And then for twenty twenty-one, we've started to speak about that calendar with the SAA.
Nancy?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Contreras?
Sticks a stick on the road.
That's our tip to, move it along, move it along.
That's right.
Keith?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, Dave?
February twentieth at juniors only at the high school. They're taking the ACT with writing that day, but we've done that a number of years in a row. I did check with one of our principals, kindergarten open houses are, they're taking registrations right now, but they're not heading open houses until April eighteenth and twenty-third. I'll add a little bit to the Redmond's Wrap on this, but John JT and I had a meeting with all eleven sports associations last week. I meant to get it in there this week and the wrap just flew out too fast for you. So, I'll elaborate on that a little bit this week. It was a good meeting though.
Paul, good to see you here. Mobile.
Relatively. I, right now, no, I don't have anything. It was kind of a cat all, all week last week, so.
Joe? I don't have anything.
Okay, Julie?
Facilities committee met. It was mostly informational, telling us what BAC had done and helping us to understand it. And I think they did a really good job that I felt much more enlightened going out than coming in. And there'll still be some BAC-type things that will be on our list. But next week, we're going to start with looking at some priority stuff. I think a lot of what we're going to do eventually is going to depend upon some things we do in our retreats before. That'll kind of speed the agenda after the retreat. And anything else that I missed?
I would make sure that as we see, build the agenda, make sure we know what those things are, that you guys are thinking you need direction on that might come out of it. So we can make sure, build them in the agenda, so make sure we know that.
Okay.
I have, I thought I had something and I guess I didn't.
I gotta look at the weather one more time.
Reggie, back up to your long drive.
Who's building the agenda for that retreat? So if we have topics we'd like to discuss, who?
Mike and I, that's it. And I'm sure with the mix of everything else, last meeting, I said, you think about those things and send them to me. I said, okay, if you got ideas, send them to me. One thing I will just tell you that we have historically, gee, this is a business thing too, I'm sure you've all experienced this. Sometimes gyms get over set and you never get to. I hate that. So I would much rather prioritize and just kind of tell you my theory and maybe get into a few things deeper. You can do anything, you can't do everything, is another phrase I like. So, if you have ideas, please send them to me.
The great news with the March dates is that we have another retreat in June, July, right? So it's not like we're six, nine months between. So if some things get bumped, it's better to.
And even at a work session. You know, I'm trying to take, take ideas from you and that was kind of the communications. And, and I thought, you know, I thought Dave and Keith with how they do staffing, I think it's very important, especially you guys who are brand new to this. Don't hesitate to share those and.
It's a great idea, and great clarification. It doesn't have to wait for a retreat. You've got a topic, you know, and there's enough energy behind it, if you will, then it might be something covered in the work session. But please do get those in. Okay. Update on meetings, so we had the committee meetings. There is, this way, they're not listed, but there is, you know, on Wednesday, two meetings, steering the, the Academy Steering Committee, that's you and me. And then CFAC also meets Wednesday night. I've told Joe that I cannot make that when I'm with Angela and Mike and I said, that's fine. But CFAC meets, that's the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee meets Wednesday night. Then we have twenty-fifth, Finance Committee meeting in advance of the Board meeting. And then Facilities meets on the twenty-seventh, so those are going to be upcoming meetings. Anything else?
Did you say six o'clock Wednesday?
Six o'clock Wednesday, yes. And for what it's worth, the Finance Committee usually sends a couple of representatives to CFAC. And historically, it's been Angela and I, I think going forward, probably Joe and I. I just can't make it Wednesday night, so Angela may, if I'm going to put her on the spot, she may sit in. Okay, great meeting, very productive. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Paul. And to Kristy, I'll vote in favor. We are adjourned.